I'll call a council meeting to order, please be seated. Motion to reconvene the open council meeting. All those in favor, opposed and carried. And I wanted to just start out tonight by telling everyone that we've had our two previous council meetings at the Metro Vancouver Boardroom facility. We have now completed the equipment and technology upgrades in our council chambers and we're back at Burnaby City Hall for tonight's meeting. This will be our first live run-through and also the first time council and staff will be operating the new system. So please bear with us if there are any technical problems or human errors during the course of this meeting. We're trying out, this is our first run and we're trying out the new equipment. Hopefully it's all going to work to allow people to hear better and to certainly get better reception at home, but you know, we may take a little while to be able to get it all worked out. And with that, we're moving on to proclamations. The first proclamation is read by councillor Kang. Councillor Kang, please.
Thank you, your worship. This proclamation is from the Office of the Mayor of the City of Burnaby, COPS for Cancer Day. Whereas each fall during the Canadian Cancer Society COPS for Cancer event, police and emergency services personnel volunteer to cycle hundreds of kilometres on a pre-designed route through B.C. communities over a course of several days and nights to raise money to fund pediatric cancer research and programs that help children and families. And whereas the Canadian Cancer Society's COPS for Cancer Tour de Coce will be travelling through Burnaby on Monday, September 26, 2016, and whereas the Tour de Coce includes 36 riders, their police escorts, sponsored vehicles, Canadian Cancer Society staff and B.C. ambulance paramedics, a total of 53 people. And whereas this year, we are honoured to have two riders, Staff Sergeant Shawna McDonald and Sergeant Tess Landry from the Burnaby detachment. Whereas on behalf of city council and the citizens of Burnaby, we welcome the Tour de Coce as a travel through our community and wish them every success in raising much-needed funding for children and families who have been touched by cancer. Now therefore Derek R. Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, do hereby proclaim Monday, September 26, 2016 as COPS for Cancer Day in the City of Burnaby. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you councillor Kang. And I've got the next proclamation. This is the International Day of Older Persons, how appropriate. Whereas the General Assembly of the United Nations adopted Resolution 46-91 on December 16, 1991, which laid out the U.N. principles for older persons. And whereas that resolution included 18 principles which promote independence, participation, care, self-fulfillment and dignity. And whereas the U.N. encourages governments to incorporate these principles into their national programmes whenever possible, which Canada has recognised in 2010. And whereas we recognise and appreciate the contribution that older persons make to their communities. And whereas we recognise that individuals are reaching an advanced age in greater numbers and in better health than ever before, and scientific research is disproving many stereotypes about inevitable and irreversible declines with age. Now therefore I, Derek R. Corrigan, Mayor of Burnaby, do hereby proclaim October 1, 2016 as International Day of Older Persons in the City of Burnaby. And now the last proclamation, councillor Johnson, please.
Thank you, your worship. And this is regarding wrongful conviction day. Whereas the loss of one's freedom due to wrongful conviction has far-reaching effects. It affects the innocence person, quality of life, as well as the quality of life for their family members, and has a harmful effect on society as a whole. And whereas the Association in Defence of Wrongly Convicted, AIDWYC, is a national non-profit organisation dedicated to identifying, advocating for and assisting individuals convicted of a crime they did not commit. It seeks to prevent such injustices in the future through legal education and reforms to the justice system. Now therefore yourself, Mayor Derek Corrigan, does proclaim October 2, 2016 as Wrongful Conviction Day in the City of Burnaby.
Thank you very much councillor Johnson. Now a motion to adopt the minutes of the council meeting held on September 12, 2016? All those in favor, opposed and carried. And a motion to hear the delegations. All those in favor, opposed, carried. The first delegation is Burnaby Community Services and B.C. Poverty Reduction Coalition in regard to a poverty reduction plan in B.C. The speakers are Stephen De Souza, the Executive Director of Burnaby Community Services, and Trish Garner, the community organisers for B.C. Poverty Reduction Coalition. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship, and distinguished city councillors. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I also wanted to thank you for your ongoing support of Burnaby Community Services, not only in providing the Brentwood Community Resource Centre, but also in numerous programme grants, including for our Community Resource Guide, a publication of services available to Burnaby residents that's coming out in October, as well as our partnership around Recreation Credit and the donation of the old Kingsway Library for our Christmas period for the last three years. We really appreciate that ongoing support. And part of that support allows us to be the voice and provide resources and opportunities for low-income families and isolated seniors. And as that's part of our mandate, we joined the B.C. Poverty Reduction Coalition, and it's on behalf of all the members of that coalition that we're here today. We come to asking to support a call for a poverty reduction plan for B.C. Now, I believe this is in line with the city's position. It's a resolution that's going towards to the UBCM later this month, and we're hoping for your support. It's in line with the Burnaby Social Sustainability Strategy, around the strategic priority number one around meeting basic needs, as well as action item number six, to advocate to the federal or provincial governments for poverty reduction and other measures that enhance economic security. So given your ongoing support for this and your ongoing advocacy around this area, I think this will be well-aligned with your position and the position of the city. And it's my pleasure to introduce my colleague, Trish, who's going to take you through that resolution and through the strategy that we're proposing.
Thanks Stephen. Thank you, Mayor and councillors, for having us here this evening. Stephen mentioned I'm Trish Garner with the B.C. Poverty Reduction Coalition, and we at the coalition urge the provincial government to launch a comprehensive poverty reduction plan for B.C. with legislated targets and timelines to tackle the root causes of poverty and improve the health and wellbeing of all British Colombians. This is about making B.C. a better place to live and work for all of us. In B.C., we have, at a conservative measure, 451,000 people living in poverty, desperately trying to keep their heads above the water. And a poverty reduction plan would provide a strong bridge to prevent people falling through the cracks. You can see on the graph, we have one of the highest poverty rates in Canada, and it's been one of the highest for the last 17 years. In relation to children, we know that one in five children in B.C. live in poverty, and it's even higher if you just look at the zero to six years range. And that of course has huge impacts on their physical, social and cognitive development. I'm really afraid for the future of these children and the future of B.C. as we try to take care of all the children that we've let down. We have here in B.C. a depth of poverty where people on social assistance aren't merely in poverty, they are in deep poverty. And this graph just shows you a range of that, looking at the single employable rate, which is just $610 a month to cover everything, and you can see the poverty gap there of just over $12,000. And then we go down, a person with disability, the rate is now $983 a month, still deeply inadequate, and you can see for families there, still in deep poverty. But we also have a breadth of poverty in B.C. Most people, most poor people in B.C. are working, so it's really a low-wage story. So with respect to the minimum wage, a similar pattern exists, albeit less extreme than welfare. Rates are frozen for years at a time, and then the total income fails to reach the poverty line. Until recently, B.C. had the lowest minimum wage in Canada despite our high cost of living. We've just seen a recent increase up to $10.85 an hour, but a single person working full-time, full-year at that rate would earn just under $20,000 a year, which is still below the poverty line. I think we all agree that full-time work should provide families with a basic level of economic security and not keep them in poverty. And this doesn't even take into account the costs of living, housing costs, food, childcare, clothing, hydro rates, MSP. We're all working harder than ever but still falling behind. And this isn't just affecting those in poverty, we're all feeling the squeeze of those affordability challenges. And there are broader impacts. Businesses in B.C. lose up to $600 million per year because of these work-life conflicts, leading to higher absenteeism, greater turnover, lower productivity and increased use of extended health benefits. The Conference Board of Canada warns that inequality can diminish economic growth, so poverty reduction plan contributes to a stronger provincial economy. B.C. is now the very last province in Canada without a poverty reduction strategy, and we can see the success of this approach throughout the country. We have an opportunity to learn from what's working and put it all together to become a leader on this critical issue. So here we can see Newfoundland Labrador raised their welfare rates for single parents to the poverty line to close that poverty gap and decrease food insecurity among this group by 50%. New Brunswick recently announced free tuition for post-secondary education for low-income families, which has the potential to provide a path out of poverty for these students. And Quebec has a longstanding universal childcare programme which not only benefits families, but also provides a return to the government. There is strong support for leadership in tackling the root causes of poverty and creating systemic change. At the B.C. Poverty Reduction Coalition, we have a broad-based network of over 400 organisations throughout B.C. that support this action. And a recent poll also found that 78% of British Colombians support this action. And a poll in business in Vancouver found that the number one issue in British Columbia is now housing homelessness and poverty overtaking jobs in the economy for the first time. This is a long-term investment in the future of B.C. for all British Colombians. Here you can see the cost of poverty that we're paying currently per year is $8 to $9 billion in relation to healthcare costs and criminal justice costs and lost productivity, and a poverty reduction plan would just cost half that, $3 to $4 billion per year. So we invite you to get involved in supporting this work through the resolution that you have before you. Many impacts of poverty are experienced at the local level, and local governments are often doing what they can without the necessary resources, as you are in Burnaby. But we need the provincial government to share the weight in this responsibility. Almost 15 city councils throughout B.C. have passed this resolution advocating for a provincial poverty reduction plan, and as Stephen mentioned, this resolution will come forward to the union of B.C. municipalities next week. The timing is tight for us tonight, but your vote here still sends an important message and joins a collective call for more action from the provincial government. If we had a poverty reduction plan for B.C. with legislated targets and timelines, kids would grow up healthier, people would be more productive, communities would be more vibrant, B.C. would be richer in so many ways. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The, what you're asking for, and I just want to be clear on this, is an endorsement of the letter that's entitled "The Call for a Poverty Reduction Plan", is that correct?
There is a resolution for you that we're asking you to pass.
I see.
Many city councils have taken the step to also sign on to the open letter, but tonight we are asking for your support for the resolution.
I'm just not finding the resolution in my materials. Madam Clerk, is the resolution included with our materials? Do you have it councillor Johnson? I don't think so, I think that's the letter, isn't it? Is this the piece here? It's not in the usual form of a resolution for us, so I want to be sure we've got the right documentation. Just for the folks at home, this dead air time is not caused by technical glitches.[943.63][943.63](Laughter). simply say, "Well, we'll consider it at the next meeting." But given that you need support now, and given that the letter appears to me to be totally within the policies that council has already implemented and follows the social sustainability strategy, I don't have much concerns about endorsing the letter, and I don't think council will have many concerns about endorsing the letter. But the motion part of it is the one I'm trying to find. I don't think we got the actual resolution with our materials.
I appreciate you waiting on this.
We got the letter, but not the resolution. If you could read it into the record for us, that might help. Put it on up on the screen. That'll test our new equipment and how well we can work with it. Have you got it up on your screen?
I do.
Got lots of staff here who are sitting at the back to see how it works, so. Why don't you do that councillor Walco, as you can?
16 of next week's UBCM, and it's the Poverty Reduction Plan for B.C., and it's sponsored by the cities of Rossland or Richmond and Nelson. And after the where-haves that the delegation has presented in their presentation, therefore be it resolved that the provincial government develop and implement a provincial poverty reduction strategy to reduce the number of people living in poverty in B.C. by setting concrete targets and timelines to reduce poverty.
It is also another resolution in there is B-47.
B-47.
Yeah, which is also, has been passed by a handful of city councils.
Poverty Reduction Strategy for B.C.
Yes.
Did you want me to read that one also, Mr. Mayor? Just the "therefore"?
I think we'll deal with this one.
Is it just the one or the other?
We'll deal with this one.
Very similar.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
I suspect that if we support this one, probably the councillors in attendance at the UBCM will support the others. I know I'm going to be over at the UBCM, and councillor Dollywall is over there. I don't know if any, councillor Walco, you're going too, I think, aren't you?
Yeah, I'll be there.
Councillor Wren? Yeah, so there's going to be four of us over there to work on this, so. All right, and I've got a couple of speakers here. It's councillor Walco, I'll go with you first.
Just very briefly, thanks for your presentation. I was wondering on the, just quickly, you had the depth of poverty graph which you showed on there. And you mentioned that over 17 years, the last 17 years, B.C. has really been dismal in any of these issues. I was wondering in your research on that poverty graph, do you have the percentages which you had on the far right of that graph? Do you have those percentages going back for the last 17 years? I'd be intrigued to see what has happened over the last 17 years percentage-wise on that issue. So I'll just leave it on that. But I was just wondering if you could just answer the one question, because I hear, whenever I hear this issue being discussed and at various levels or individuals and organisations that don't wish to address the issue, always have the comeback, and I'm wondering if you have a response to it. And the comeback is always, "Well, you know, all this is great, but the best poverty reduction strategy is really a job. We're in the business of creating jobs." So I was wondering if you could maybe just have a brief response to that?
Yes, that's definitely a comeback that we hear a lot. And I think that when I was talking about the breadth of poverty, I hope that that speaks to that issue. What we're facing here in B.C. is actually many people who have jobs, who are working hard to try to make ends meet and are not able to, they're struggling. We have about one in four workers who are earning less than $15 an hour. $15 would be just above the poverty line. So that's a tremendous amount of workers in B.C. who are really struggling. A job works if it's a good job, but what we're seeing in B.C. is the creation of many precarious jobs, contract, vulnerable positions, many workers working more than one job, multiple job holders here. So a good job works to get people out of poverty, but not the low-wage situation that we often have here in B.C.
And the reality is for many of the people who are in these situations, if you're a single parent with small children, the ability to get any kind of daycare, to be able to look after your child when you're being paid minimum wage is almost impossible. New refugees who are coming in who can't speak English, can't be expected that they're going to be immediately employable, people with disabilities who are living well below the poverty line, I mean this range of people. And so it's just too trite to say that a job is the best way to get out of this. If the job is not an option for you, then you're doomed to live in this abject poverty for the rest of your life. And that certainly is not an optimistic way for anybody to go about living their life. And it causes, I agree with you wholeheartedly, we see it in the City of Burnaby, that these problems with mental illness and poverty end up being problems for other parts of the system, whether it's education, policing, healthcare. It's very, very expensive, and it's much less expensive to deal with the problem in a very forthright way, to look at bringing people out of that poverty and giving them stability. So you know, it's a great movement, and we can only be hopeful that there's going to be more attention paid to it. It gives me a good feeling if in fact this is becoming a big issue in the election coming up, because it's going to bring governments to the table to discuss this. In fact, we've seen the issues surrounding housing have just caused the government to react today with a commitment of $500 million towards housing. So you know, the pressure that's being put on on these issues is starting to get at least some kind of a response and beginning to answer some of the issues. It's a little late, and certainly there's a big hole that we've dug, but any way we can start digging our way out is good. So you know, I think all of us feel positive about that.
Just to add to one of the populations you mentioned, seniors.
Seniors.
There's a large population of seniors who are below the poverty line and are really struggling in our community. And so the proclamation today about recognise the International Day of Older Adults in the City of Burnaby really achieved, I think, more attention to seniors who are living in poverty in our community.
Yeah, and Stephen, one of the issues with that is that if you're in one of these minimum-wage jobs, you don't get a pension. The only pension you get is Canada Pension, an old-age pension at the end of it all, which still keeps you living below the poverty line. So you could have worked all your life and never have been in a position to obtain a pension because you weren't in a unionised job or a government job or one of the other opportunities to get a pension. So you're relying wholly on the Canada Pension Plan and old-age pension at the end of it. So we can see how many people are affected. All right, council is a, can I have a motion to endorse the motion and to endorse the letter on the call for a poverty reduction plan? Right, so it's been moved that we're going to endorse both, and a second, please. Is there any further discussion? None, all those in favor, opposed and carried. Thank you very much for coming tonight, and we really appreciate the work that you're doing. I can tell you that it helps us, because in cities, we're at the ground level for all of these issues. And any effort that's made to get attention drawn to this issue really helps us in being able to try and work with residents who are suffering as a result of the extreme poverty that exists, particularly in the core area of the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Corrigan.
All right, and we're moving on to the next delegation who is here with us tonight, and that's Frederick Kooton. Is that the appropriate pronunciation of your name? And that's in regard to Community Garden 3785 Edinburgh Street. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, and thank you to take the time to look over the project and what I put together. I just move in, on Edinburgh Street in November, and quite happy to be in Burnaby from Vancouver. When we push out the house, in the back of the house, in the back lane, I'm sure you will be able to see it. I'm the one who... Sorry. New for me also. At the back lane, you can see there was, there's a property line and also the park. Part of the park is a back street. Twenty years ago, the previous owner planned edge right here, it's never been cleaned and trimmed, but plenty of blackberry bush getting wild in there that's coming over the street. So I decided to get this edge back where it was and trim the edge. So when I clean everything, that's pretty much what I was looking, looked like before. You can see there was some rimming concrete from the previous builders, and there was everything bottled, canned. Also the sign of the city was done below, buried in there, so I put it back when there was no dumping, et cetera. So I put everything back together, you will see it on the next one. So pretty much what we did, we get this house, we trim everything, and at one point, one weekend, I decided to clean this garden that was blocking the view and not to save. So when I've been doing that, apparently there's a person, one person who came to the city and complained and said, "Well, I was cutting pretty much a tree on the park". It was not the case, those trees had been planted way before, long ago, and never been trimmed, so that's pretty much what I did. Quite a bit of, reinstalled the park, no dumping, et cetera. So after I realised all the land was kind of drying down and that wasn't clean at all, so I took the decision and also at the same time, sorry, that one of the employees from the city came over and asked me on one evening what I was doing, so I explained what I was exactly, and the guy said, "Yeah, I understand what you're doing, that makes sense." Said, "Well, but I have to refer to my superior, my supervisor, just take a few pictures and we will get back to you." So I said, "No problem." Apparently to me, it was pretty simple. I didn't know I had to come tonight to explain myself when I was trimming trees, but anyway. So as we're going at the side, I talk with my neighbours, and everybody, the people was walking by with the dog, jogger, neighbour, kids, I was pretty happy to see that. and at one point, one weekend, I decided to clean this garden that was blocking the view and not to save. So, when I've been doing that, apparently, there's a person, one person who came to the city and complained, and said, "Well, I was cutting pretty much a tree on the park." It was not the case. Those trees been planted way before, long ago, and never been trimmed. So, that's pretty much what I did. Quite a bit of, I reinstated the park, no dumping, et cetera. So, after I realized all the land was kind of drying down, and that wasn't clean at all, so I took the decision. And also, at the same time, sorry, one of the employees from the city came over and asked me on one evening what I was doing. So, I explained what I was exactly, and the guy said, "Yeah, I understand what you're doing. That makes sense." Said, "Well, but I have to refer to my superior, my supervisor. Just take your picture, and we will get back to you." So, I said, "No problem." Apparently, to me, that was pretty simple. I didn't know I had to come tonight to explain myself when I was trimming trees. But anyway, so as we're going, I decide to talk with my neighbors, and everybody, the people was walking by with the dog, jogger, neighbor, kids, was pretty happy to see that finally clean and clear. While I did respect everything on the way of the trees, when I trim everything, as you can see, I really make an effort to make sure not cutting the main trees. So, that's why I cut the hedge. All of the trees, I rent a disposable beam, a green one, to make sure all of the trees, the trimming would go back to the recycling, make sure nothing's going to be dumped anywhere or whatsoever. So, all the costs I did take myself. I reseeded everything, I re-put some newer top soil, reseeded everything. As you can see now, a few weeks later, actually, a month later, the new spot's coming up now, look pretty nice. So, while I'm here, actually, I had a, a while ago, I had one employee from the city, which I didn't know, there was a formal letter to say, "Well, I have to remove everything. What I did was wrong. I have to remove those kind of small retaining, old level, everything, remove the box. We create, pretty much do a garden for, Community Garden for kids." We get quite a bit of kids in the street, about eight of them, and they see I put some strawberries, I put everything on all now, because I don't know what I'm going to do. But, pretty much, the city asked me to remove everything. So, I said, "Well," talking to the neighbor and everyone, "Well, that's what they look like now. You can see it all the way at Edinburgh on the north side. All of my neighbor, we all taking care of trimming the grass, make sure everything's clean, safe. And personally, I think the job is not too bad." And in order to remove everything, and well, you know, there's quite a bit of time involved in that. I think all of my neighbor, everybody making great effort to keep it organized. On the bottom right, you can see what it was look before, it looked like before. Now, you can see it actually what it looked like. Well, it's very simple. Well, potential of garden, you know, we can have zucchini, tomatoes, et cetera, strawberries, which is already the kids in the street coming and picking up, which is nice to see a kid playing in a garden. And actually, educate them also on just simply how the food's growing, how the carrots been grow, how we get the leaks, you know. I'm not have any intention to go in the farmer market and start a business on that. Just to get the kids, you know, pick up the tomatoes and strawberries and make all the neighbor, neighbor clean. I have, that's another one picture also of the street. You can see it all the way. I mean, that's clean and organized. And what I did, I pretty much clean and did exactly the same. So, I don't know why the, because one person complained, because I trimmed the hedge, now I have to remove everything. I understand I'm just on the borderline, and I'm pretty clear with that. What I'm saying is that it's quite a bit of hours. Even I talk, I called to get an appointment over here tonight, and the person I talked to from the city said, "Oh, no, that's beautiful what you did. We don't want you to remove that." So, I'm kind of, okay, on one side, you're asking me to remove everything, but the other side, you tell me, "Well, good job. It's great." I don't, I'm not here to ask any money whatsoever. The cost total of that is about $3,700. All the bills are here. I'm not asking anybody to pay for that. I did for the community, for everyone. Very simple as that. Well, actually, no, $2,700, $2,972.67, just for the seed, the top soil, the two trucks, moving everything, and not my labor and everything. So, that's pretty much what I, why I'm here tonight, just for you to maybe take in consideration, all of the effort we did for the neighborhood to have the kids playing safe in the street, make sure when the drivers coming through, they can see if there's kids playing behind the bush or whatever. It's a safety issue. Also, maybe to have those kids, to kids and neighbor build up this community garden, bring the people together, like we're doing lots of this on every angle.
Is that it?
I'm sorry for my accent.
Oh, your English is excellent, far better than my French.
Thank you.
I appreciate you being here tonight. The difficulty for council and for our staff is the issues surrounding public policy as to people taking action in parks on their own accord, not going through a request of the city in order to begin a project like that, and getting the consent of the city. Like any property owner, I'm sure you wouldn't want someone coming in and building something on your lot that you hadn't permitted. The city's in the same position, and if we allow people to do this, soon you have people building in all of our parks. And it is not a way in which we implement public policy. There are, and I think all of us recognize, there are citizens who attempt to do things in regard to city lands, to clean things up, and to make it a little easier for them to be able to get their car in, or to move around their lot. But in this case, deciding that you're going to put a community garden into a park is significantly more than the city would countenance. These parks are there for a purpose of general public access, ecology, and other elements like that. So, it is a very difficult thing to do without additional policy. There are, in fact, community gardens in the city, and you're welcome to participate in those community gardens. But they've been done through a process in which applications were made, and the city was in a position to consent. The city will not be able to tolerate community gardens that are simply unilaterally decided upon by community members. That isn't an appropriate way to be able to have a consistent approach. So, I'm sorry that you put in this much work, and I think you are getting a mixed message, because there's no one who's going to look at what you've accomplished as far as cleaning up the area and say, "It doesn't look better," you know. But the reality is, turning it over to have structures built on the property and gardens to be put in is significantly more than council would have approved, or has any bylaws to allow.
Your worship, I don't think you understood him correctly. He hasn't put a community garden in. I think he was proposing the concept of a community garden for the alley. All he did, my neighbor did, was really trim the hedge down, which everyone else has, these unnatural hedges in the back alley, mysteriously somehow got planted. And he trimmed it off and planted grass, as is the case everywhere else down the alley. He got notice to remove that. Whereas, other, I mean, in other parts of the alley, almost every other part of the alley, it's tolerated. In fact, and indeed, not to talk too far to school, but you did a, you've done a sewer separation project throughout our neighborhood. And in our alley in particular, when you did that, you removed some structures in the park that were put there by previous owners, including oil change ramps. And indeed, the city replaced those after you finished the construction. All Mr. Frederic did was trim the hedge and plant grass. And for that, he got a notice to take that out. Whereas, every other aspect of that alley, as you could see from the, from some of the shots, every other, including my own, my own back alley, I mow the lawn behind in the park, because that's what everyone does in the alley.
So what is that wooden structure, then?
The wooden structure, it's just, we put it that here for the kids, because there was kids asking, "Oh, that would be nice to have a garden." This structure is not based on concrete. In twenty minutes, that could be removed. It's not a problem. It's a set out treat, which is like playing, and all, everything I did, I think I did on the right way regarding the cost. I didn't know that cost would take me that far. But I say, "Well, if I do something, let's do it right." But again, it's just for question to safety for the kids. And this wood structure is just, I put some strawberries in there for the neighborhood. That's it. I have no intention to do a parking lot. I have no intention to get a better view, because my view where I am, actually, I get the view, I just trim the hedge and put some grass, that's all, like, like everybody in the back. Instead to have a wide blackberries, which is, I gather later, also, few of my neighbors who didn't mention, they have to the city to come few times to train that. It's a safety hazard. Well, I understand, it's been, I totally understand, I'm not going to build up anything on the property line of the city, of the park. It's all right, it's not a problem. What I'm just saying, that's what I did. Just leveled that, put the grass, make it clean, and trim the hedge. That's it. So, that could be, that could be done differently on the way, the mysterious person, the letters come with a spiked nail, and just spike that right on the wood, on the set out, which is I plan myself, and I furnish everything to make it clean. You know, I was not too happy and impressed, especially I have no name of anybody to get back to say, "Okay, who am I going to talk to?"
Well, maybe, it may be a language difficulty, but it looked to me like you'd built something in the park. And, and if you built something in the park, that would draw our attention and people's attention to the fact that you were utilizing parkland for some other purpose. It looked to me like a raised garden, but if it's not a raised garden, and you say it is for children's play, is that what?
Well, all of the neighbor, if they want. I mean, if the box is an issue, it's not a problem. I told you already. Twenty minutes is gone. But what I'm saying is, I mean, all of the work I put in there, and again, I'm not going to use the parkland or whatever. What I did, I just trimmed. So, I make it clean, remove, and put it back, the sign actually, no dumping from the city, which is, I don't know how long that was buried behind that, and I put it back. That, that's my intention, just to keep it clean.
Well, I think the reaction to anybody building things in our park is usually that you're going to find our staff are there. And, and so, you know, I think trimming some hedges and whatnot may very well have been never considered a problem by staff, but building things in the park will be considered a problem. In any event, given that there is clearly some issues that we need to look at, I'll ask staff to report back on it to us. Counselor Balko, you had a question or a comment?
I just want to make a comment, just on the system. I noticed we've got a typo up there on the speaking queue. Just thought I'd point that out. I know it's a difficult name, but anyways. I just wanted to make a comment. I think, I think you were correct, and I think the supporter for the delegation also mentioned it. I think what we've got here is a little bit of a misunderstanding, I think, between what the intent is and what the definition is of what we think is going on. This is the first I had heard of this issue. I, I know that we have a process in place within parks whenever, when we do community gardens. It's a little more onerous than simply taking it upon yourself, looking at a site, and wandering onto that property and cleaning it up. So, that, I think everyone understands that. But I will attempt to get out to the area to take a look. I'm a little bit familiar with this area, but I would like to see what's going on. I'm intrigued by Mr. Cooton's arrival on the, on the scene in the city of Burnaby in November of last year. And, you know, within eight, nine months, Mr. Cooton takes a look at something, and he says, "I think I'm going to improve the neighborhood." You know, that's, you can't be knocking him on that. But I think there is a process, and there may be something that's occurring here that the majority of the neighbors may wish to participate in. I do know that in that area, there's some prominent landscapers that are there. They'll probably have some ideas as to what could be done. So, again, I'm not recommending anything. I'm not asking for anything. But I will be in contact with the delegation and visit the site myself. And perhaps in the interim, city staff can pass on the information in regards to community gardens, which, again, I think you're right. I don't think this is what we're dealing with here. But let's figure out what's going on.
No, and I suspect that as Chair of the Parks Commission, building community gardens in our parks may not be the highest priority, but it's certainly something all of us should be concerned about. You're never the nice guy when you're dealing with these issues. I can remember, this isn't my first rodeo, I can remember having to deal with treehouses that were being built in the park, and being made out as Simon Legree for taking down a kid's, a kid's treehouse that they had built in the trees in our, in our park. But again, it's a question of precedent, and how many people are going to be allowed to build houses in your park in the trees. And oftentimes, you look bad for upholding the rules. But our staff have to be able to look at a consistent set of rules to be able to ensure that we're doing the same thing throughout the city and responding in the same way. As they say in my profession, as hard cases make bad law. And oftentimes, you can, you can accept something that later on, that's a precedent for other people to do things that have a much worse effect. So, we'll get a report back on it. And we appreciate your effort to make your neighborhood look better, and the effort that your neighbors have made, to make their neighborhood look better. And we'll try to achieve the right balance in regard to how we approach it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. All right, and a motion to have staff prepare a report? Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, carried. And your name has been corrected already, Counselor Balko. I think that staff has a rule, you lose one letter per every time you speak. I can do that. Do you have the ability to delete yourself? That should be a quote in the paper. All right, a motion to resolve into a committee of the whole to consider reports? Moved and seconded. All those in favor, opposed, carried. The first report is from the Environment Committee, Counselor King.
Reports from the Environment Committee endorsing the City of North Vancouver's resolution regarding cigarette butt deposit return program, and to recommend that council send a letter to the UBCM, or just in support of the resolution. And I assume, your worship, should I, should I read the resolution, or it's already in front of us?
No, it's already in front of us.
Okay. Sure, so at...
Simply speak to it.
Sure. So, at the Environment Committee last, last week, all members unanimously endorsed this cigarette butt deposit program for the reasons that we recognize that cigarette butts are significant sources of litter in many local communities, and that includes Burnaby as well. Cigarette butts are non-biodegradable, and they're toxic, which impacts negatively to both our water streams and also the landlife that we have here. And so, by supporting this resolution for a return program, we can do a part in helping to reduce cigarette butt litter and improve environmental health. So, the Environment Committee would kindly recommend that council send a letter to UBCM in support of the City of North Vancouver's resolution regarding this program. Thank you, worship.
Thank you. I'm sure that cigarette smokers will be very pleased to have another charge added on to their pack. All right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Social Planning Committee, Counselor Balko.
This is in regards to the Truth and Reconciliation Commission of Canada, and it was an overview of calls to action. On behalf of the committee, I've moved the recommendation. And this is the report be received for information purposes. And just very briefly, your worship, this is an excellent report, and I know that council will be, will be intrigued by some of the information in it. I found, what I found interesting was that, based on our census, that almost 2% of the population of the city of Burnaby identifies themselves in the census as indigenous. So, that was an interesting thing. The report mainly, this came out of the Social Planning Committee. A member, a couple of members asked to see what the city was doing in regards to recommendations in the Truth and Reconciliation Commission final report that was led by Justice Murray Sinclair. And if council will turn, and I won't read them all, but if council turns to page 26 under 5.0, the recent and ongoing related initiatives in Burnaby, I think council will be impressed with the city's role in working with our school district, along with our library board, in trying to live up to some of the recommendations that were presented in the Truth and Reconciliation Committee.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Moving on to the City Manager's Report. Item one is the Burnaby Housing Profile for 2016. It's been moved and seconded. Counselor Johnson.
Report, and it basically is the status of the housing initiatives in the city of Burnaby. I think it's a very interesting, informative document. It includes everything from history of housing development in the city of Burnaby, to growth management plans, Burnaby's various housing policies, and then some statistics. We, for example, we have the third-largest non-market housing inventory in the city, in the province of British Columbia, with over 5,900 units of non-market housing, which includes housing cooperatives, public housing, and non- cooperatives, public housing, and nonprofit housing units. We, it outlines some, some various initiatives lately, like the 181 non-market units at the Cedar Place Development, some issuance of some proposals that have been happening recently, the fact that we've received, been collecting density bonus money, and we've been applying 20% of it to a housing fund for future initiatives. That there are, we, then has a bit of an inventory of what the types of housing are in the City of Burnaby, such as 32,000 market rental units. And these are growing throughout the city. Recent developments of 559 purpose-built rental housing units, 300 in Brentwood, 21 in 3,700 block Hastings, and 238 units in the Sussex Grange area. The report shows some other initiatives and some, and some key indicators that there's, for example, in July of 2016, there were 4,361 new housing units under construction in the City of Burnaby. I'm not going to give them all. What the report doesn't give, and I understand why, but it's, it's unfortunate because I think the public should see the whole picture. What the report doesn't show are the lost initiatives, lost opportunities that have taken place in the last couple of years, such as the youth development center at Willington in Canada Way, that landsman sitting vacant, the provincial government had the opportunity of working with the city there on housing and, and land sitting vacant. We have other properties such as the Elizabeth Fry Society on Hastings Street, where we had a proposal, went right through the second reading, and then the provincial government pulls the funding at the last minute. And both the Elizabeth Fry Society is out, out of a facility, and the city has lost that opportunity to develop those units. I think it's unfortunate that those situations happen, so I think the report is great, but I think we have to look at the whole picture, so just leave it at that.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor King.
Housing has been a very hot topic for some time now, and I want to thank the Director of Planning, Building, and all the staff in the department for putting together such a detailed report that we have before us. This report is easy to read and contains lots of pictures, as the previous speaker has said, there's pictures from pre-19th century to pre-World War II to 1950s, and it's all in, in the books. So I would just really encourage everyone to go online or get a hard copy from our City Hall to, to take a look at the evolution of time from a long time ago to right now. And so what it says is, it contains pictures to guide the reader through the change of times of our housing auction inventories, and clearly details the actions and direction that the City of Burnaby is taking in achieving sustainable and complete community. Basically, Burnaby's housing stock is a product of our history. From 100 years ago, we had farmhouses, now we see brand-new suites, housing types are built and maintained and replaced within the context of our social, economic, and cultural change in the community. Your worship, one of the challenges that we have seen in the recent years is a skyrocketing rise of housing prices. In this competitive housing market, non-market housing, sorry, non-market rental housing is an important way to manage the problem of affordability. And the City of Burnaby leases land that it owns to nonprofit societies and housing corporations that are wanting to support the building of non-housing, non-market housing. And the city works closely with nonprofit organizations such as the Lyons Mulberry Place, the Ridge Lawn Gardens, Garden Square Housing Cooperative, and that's just to name a few. And so today, we've provided together in partnership 302 units of non-market rental, which includes housing with support. And the amount of housing that we have been providing through partnerships and through the city is actually second in the region. So I think we're doing a great job. The city also recently has formalized its practice by adopting the City Land Program for Non-Market Housing Program, which I think is a great program. This allows our city to, or sorry, this allows designation of our city lands to be leased at nominal cost to providers of non-market affordable housing. Most recently, our city has designated two sites on 18th Street and on Hastings Street, which was posted in June of 2016. And then 10 of these programs to help increase the stock of non-market rental housing in Burnaby. So your worship, we are doing our job, trying our best to respond to the growth of time, the change of time, the difficulty of the time that we are experiencing right now. And so wonderful to see many community partners come together and to work together to support non-market housing, despite the contributions made by nonprofit organizations in the city. I still feel that we still need federal and provincial funding to assist us in this matter. And with our recent decades of inadequate supply of non-market housing, I think there's a lot of work to be done to catch up with increased house of cost and command, demand. Another way that we are providing, and that is documented in our report here, is the city is able to provide for a range of non-market housing, including housing with support, is through the Community Benefit Bonus Policy Program. And this program is available for properties that are being developed within our town centers, and we have four of those in Metro Town, Edmonds, Brentwood, and Low Heath. And so developments within these town centers can be achieved, can achieve additional density in exchange for community benefits. For example, things like recreation center, childcare, swimming pool, Tommy Douglas is one of the prime examples that we have as well. Or we could take cash in lieu or future amenities such as housing or combination of each. So we are doing the best that we can, and we continue to go forward with partnership and programs that we have in place. But just wanted to show off a little bit of what we have been doing. To date, with our Community Benefit Bonus Policy and Housing Fund, we've achieved 19 affordable or special housing units in the Brentwood Town Center, and that's a bonus density value of $3.9 million. And as well, most recently, partnership agreement with BC Housing and a private developer, we have been able to achieve 181 non-market housing units at Cedar Place, and that's 90 units of non-market for family housing and 91 units of non-market for senior housing. So I think, you know, this is wonderful news going forward with the city. As well, we have $2 million in housing grants to five non-market housing projects, and this totals 276 non-market housing that we have here in Burnaby. As well, we have $40 million saved for the Housing Fund for future housing projects and initiatives. So when people talk about the City of Burnaby not doing much about non-market housing, not building rental housing, that is not correct. We are going forward with lots of initiatives, and I encourage people to just take up this nice huge package of reading and to see the different housing options, creativity that we have come up with our city. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Counselor King. Counselor Dallywell.
Thank you, your worship. One of the things that report touches on is the market rental housing. It has been a fact around the region that for many, many years now, three decades or so, four decades perhaps even, not much activity has happened in rental housing. Most of the rental housing that we have was built in 60s and 70s and some probably 80s, but nothing since then. That's because provincial government and federal government that used to have incentive for developers have been taken away. There hasn't been much incentive, and the market itself wasn't really covering the rental housing. So there hasn't been a whole lot. And, and that's a, that's been a stress on, on the local rental community, because if you don't have a whole lot of new rental properties coming on stream, you end up staying where the old apartments are. And those apartments now seem to be getting to the end of life cycle, they haven't been kept up very much, and, and there is a panic in the community that there's perhaps not much rental market, even market rental housing. City has supported development over the last 25 years, which has really resulted in a fair amount of condominium, new condos, which approximately 30% are rental, that helps somewhat in, in to alleviate what the demand, the increased demand is. But, but nothing has really filled the, the need what used to be before because of the lack of current policies. CHMC is out of business, government's taking away all the investment that was happening into housing. I gather today was the province that announced some funding, $500,000, $500 million in housing. One of the things that I caught in the announcement was, your worship, that the government can't do anything with rental housing, it's up to the local government, its own properties for rental housing. And that came as a surprise to me coming from the premier, unless I didn't catch it because it was just audio once, I didn't read it, the transcript. But what was clearly put by the premier that it's up to the local governments and the mayors and councillors to zone properties for rental housing. And that, either I don't understand it, your worship, because I have been all these years understood that, that we were kind of restricted in going into and saying that this particular piece of property, this area is going to be rental only. I understood to be not our jurisdiction, not our authority, we couldn't do it. In fact, if I recall, local governments have been asking the provincial government for many, many years through UBCM to allow or give the local governments the response, the authority to designate certain areas. So we could have been developing more new rental housing coming on stream versus waiting for just now. Recently, I see the report says, okay, we are into, recently into 559 units. And that's good, that's a good, good news because some developers are coming forward. But it's far cry from what was at one time, a sport from the provincial and the federal government on an ongoing basis, so there's a, there's a fresh spy of rental housing. And, and so what I've been raising here tonight is, is your worship, for the staff, to perhaps maybe refresh my memory on this one, if I'm correct, that whether we, we missed the boat on this one, that where we are not directly able to rezone properties for rental only, that's what my understanding, and I would like to be corrected if, if I'm wrong. I would also like to see whether I'm right in, in saying that in the past, the City of Burnaby and other local governments have asked the province to, to allow us to do it, so that, that, that isn't, has happened. Not that it will change anything strictly, because the, unless there's some other incentives to go with it, perhaps it wouldn't work. But just to say that out there, that local governments aren't doing enough, in my, in my thinking is, is not very responsible way of really asking the local governments to help. So I raised that, your worship, maybe, maybe the staff can respond to that, or perhaps there's something to follow up.
Well, I can, I can help you a little bit, and I'll turn it over to staff. But the first time we asked for the provincial government to give us the authority to be able to zone for rental housing was in 1990. So it was 26 years ago, we made our first request, and then we've repeatedly made requests for that authority since that time, and it hasn't been granted. Mr. Pelche?
Yes, your worship, that's true. We generally don't have the ability through zoning to regulate tenure, to regulate the tenure under a zoning application. So someone bring forward a rental project to us, is, they're bringing it forward to us as a viable project in the first place, and then we're able to support that rather than, don't have the legislative base to impose that requirement.
I think I can find the letter for you, Counselor Dallywell, from the provincial government that was addressed as a response to our last effort, in which they indicated, and I think about two or three lines, that we were not going to be given the ability to zone for rental housing because it would interfere with private property rights. It was a very simple letter that said that was it. And so I'm, I'm surprised if the premier is indicating that somehow that's within our powers because she has a misunderstanding unfortunately of what we can do.
Thank you.
Counselor Velco.
I don't want to leave this point because I've listened to the announcements today all day from the premier and the minister responsible for housing, and the minister responsible for LNG plants in this province. And I'm reminded that four years ago, this same minister promised us that we'd have three LNG plants online and operating in this province. That was a promise in the 2013 election, so I don't know how accurate the minister's projections are going to be in regards to this. But I think this point is an important one to make. I heard the same comments that Counselor Dallywell heard from the minister and the premier in regards to its municipalities and cities in this province, particularly in the lower mainland, that are really the main obstacle to the construction of any type of housing rental in particular. That point, so it's 26 years since the UBCM, I think, was making the request, not the City of Burnaby. This is the Union of British Columbia Municipalities, this is every city and village in this province has asked for the right to have the ability to zone for rental and has been repeatedly denied. So to hear the premier and the minister today start accusing and pointing fingers at cities in, in, in the province, particularly in the lower mainland, they were singling out Vancouver in the comments I heard about holding up the ability for developers to, to get on with projects, I think is an important point to hammer home. I attended on Friday, UDI Urban Development Institute panel of five persons, five economists, realtors, lawyers, et cetera, discussing these very matters. And what struck me at that one, this is only last Friday, was exactly this issue came up again. And it's starting to gain traction out there with absolutely no basis for it, that one of the major problems in the housing market in metro Vancouver, aside from what everyone is now aware of what's going on in tax evasion and various other issues, it's the cities, it's the planning departments in the cities that are sitting there and just throwing too many hoops and obstacles in the way of development, so nothing can be done. So I think this point is an important one, and next week at the UBCM, I, I don't know if it's in there, I, I noticed this year, I don't see that resolution coming forward. I think the UBCM may have just finally, finally conceded and said, that's it. So I think it's important that the point is made and that people pick up on it. We don't have the ability to zone for rental as much as we would like to, recognizing the fact that it's been, as Counselor Dallywell said, over four decades since the federal government abandoned the scene, scene for national housing, and the provinces finally couldn't do it on their own hook. So there's no, absolutely no cooperation between the provincial and federal governments. Now, all of a sudden, we've got a crisis which was really of their making because it's their responsibility constitutionally for housing. Now, all of a sudden, we're starting to see some sorts of, of reactions to it. So I just wanted to, you know, support again what Counselor Dallywell said and what you said. I think this is a piece of history that's really important to understand as to the implications of decisions taken three decades ago, leading up as one of the reasons why we're in the situation we're at, not here, just in metro Vancouver. Toronto's going through the same thing, major, major urban areas in Canada are going through the same thing because of a decision, a poorly taken decision back in the 90s.
Counselor Johnson.
We do hope that it's not a, just strictly an election announcement, they're saying that they're going to put 500 million, 500 billion into housing, but from what I read today, there's no new units, it's going to be buying existing facilities such as the hotel facilities and/or buying blocks from developers in, in already being constructed or built buildings. So I do hope that it's not a, a total announcement and there's, there's nothing happening. I also heard that the deadline for applications or, or opportunities is, I believe, March 15th, which was roughly, I think it's 60 days before the provincial election date. So maybe true, maybe we're going to get 500 billion, 500 billion, I'm sorry, in housing, but it could be just another LNG announcement, and I hope that's not the case because there's people in Burnaby and other municipalities, or other, that are looking for affordable housing, and I don't think they should be played politics.
Thank you, Counselor Johnson, and I know it is one of the real difficulties we encounter is that And I know it is one of the real difficulties we encounter is that, uh, that when an issue like this reaches panic proportions, uh, you suddenly have a media frenzy around the issue. And the first victim of the media frenzy in my experience has been the truth. Uh, realistically, when you get a document like this that is, uh, listing the number of times that the city of Burnaby and the Union of B C Municipalities have endorsed motions telling the government that this problem was becoming epidemic and that we had to find solutions and offering up different ways in which we can assist in trying to establish more rental housing and ensuring, um, better maintenance of housing and ensuring that there's, uh, more accessibility to housing. We've done that over and over again. And in this document, you can see the letters and motions that have been made over the case, over the course of many years. Unfortunately, it's very seldom covered when you're doing that because it isn't an emergency. And so the reality is, while you're warning that it will become an emergency, not much attention is paid. At least now, this issue has become important enough that the provincial government prior to an election is saying, we're going to give 500 million dollars towards housing. You know, so it may be a pre-election announcement, but for me, it's a recognition that they haven't been putting the money in that was necessary to avoid this emergency. And when you look at the federal government, the letter, uh, to Minister de Clos, who is the housing minister for the federal government from the prime minister, was very clearly, there hasn't been anything done in the housing portfolio for, since 1992, when the Liberals got out of housing, we need to aggressively start to pursue this issue. So here we are, we have the results of decades of not doing anything and suddenly all of these governments, because it's become number one as an issue for election, all of these governments are now reacting. But municipalities who knew this was coming have been reacting for, literally since the early nineties, saying, if you get out of the business, this is going to be disastrous. Additionally is the lack of rental housing. It used to be there were CMHC loans that were provided for rental housing purposes and, uh, much of the market rental housing built in Burnaby was built under CMHC loans and with tax incentives. And so we end up in a situation where you decline to do those things anymore, rental housing tails off and eventually you're in a situation where you, your rental housing has reached, as councillor Dallywell pointed out, the end of its life, where they are 50 and 60-year-old wood frame buildings that are no longer able to support the tenants that are in them. And they are no longer economic for the people who are operating those, those, uh, rental housing businesses. So that's one of the problems we've encountered as we've moved in to particularly the metro town area, which we're going to deal with in the next report. It's extremely frustrating and, uh, and I hope, you know, I know this is a complicated issue, but I hope that citizens and, and the media will take a hard look at something like the Burnaby Housing Profile where you have a comprehensive look at exactly what's happening in Burnaby and that they're fair about reporting what the issues are, who has been dealing with these issues, how we've been trying to cope with the problems that face us, the limited means we have and the, and the idea of us contributing as much as we can to try to alleviate it. And every opportunity we get, we seize to work with the senior levels of government to try to establish housing affordability in our communities. But we've said over and over again, we can't go alone. We can't be put in a situation where the expectations are all on property taxes to be able to support this. And I, I say that in the context because the other issue that we recently said, heard from Minister Fassbender in regard to Translink, his response to the cities in regard to transit issues was we should just suck it up and pay for it. Well, how many of these issues can you put on property taxpayers? And that's where I stand my ground on these issues is that you can't expect that people who are paying property taxes can absorb all of these social costs when it's the provincial and federal government that are taxing people to cover exactly those responsibilities. We can't, we have to leave our other responsibilities if we take on theirs and that's the problem that we suffer. We try to find creative ways to work on all of these situations, but they don't solve all of the problems. And because we're the government close to the people, we're the first ones to hear the criticism and the first ones to be called on the fact that these problems exist in our community. And nobody looks back at what we've done over the years to try to tell everybody that this problem was coming. So this Burnaby Housing Profile, go online, have a look at it, order it from our staff. I commend it to all of the pundits out there who often have criticisms is that I think is a good document for the editor of newspapers to read and to be able to, to look at what has been happening over the course of the past years and, and cover some of the initiatives that have been taken because there's been some great things done in the city of Burnaby to find creative ways. And if you give us a chance to work with the federal and provincial government, if they bring money to the table, we can all do more. And I want to end by saying, nobody talks about the Greater Vancouver Housing Corporation, Metro Vancouver Housing Corporation that has units all over the lower mainland, many of them here in Burnaby, where they provide affordable housing and social housing combined, highly successful. They, they operate without subsidy, but they haven't had any money from the federal or provincial government to be able to build new housing in 30 years. And so there are, there are no new units, even though you've got a provider who does a great job without subsidy, is that provider doesn't get any money to be able to build any, any new units. And under those circumstances, even if municipalities offer up land, the money isn't there to be able to build the units. Now, I think that what we should be doing and what the government should be doing is working through the Greater Vancouver Housing Corporation because they're a trustworthy organization, extremely experienced, they know how to do the job and they combine social housing with affordable rental housing, which means that no one is stigmatized in those units as it means they become a part of the community. And that's so important to be able to achieve that. So it's one of the most frustrating parts of the work that we do is where things are outside our control and we have to go on bended knee to get the help we need to in our communities. And it makes everyone, I think, extremely concerned about achieving that mix of population of demographics that make cities vibrant and allow us to be able to have a complete city. All right. And with that, are you ready for question? All those in favor, opposed and carried? That segues to item two. This, this report is to respond to the issues raised by, uh, a delegation at the May 16th, 2016 meeting of council and to provide a review of their submitted report entitled "The Community Under Attack." Councillor Dallywell?
First of all, I, um, I want to thank the staff. They were very diligent in responding to the questions and issues raised in the, in the report that's addressed in this, uh, this report. It was a report that the delegation brought to us, I believe in May, "A Community Under Attack." And it raised a number of, um, I guess, uh, I could say accusation against the city, that why, uh, city wasn't doing a number of things that in my belief, they assumed wrongly that it was a city's responsibility to begin with. I, I fully understand the frustrations of many of those who are facing, um, rent increases because the old apartments are, are destined to be taken down someday by the, either the developers who are currently on or someone else would do it, but they're going to perhaps be replaced with, uh, new building which would not be the same rent. And that's what is on people's mind and, and that's why they're worried. Um, and, and I can assure them, the council is just as concerned as they are, except they chose to point their guns at the wrong, um, party. We, we are with them. We have, I've been trying to, um, work with our citizens, particularly those in rental, rental places such as metro town, to make sure that if there is disruption to their homes, there's adequate tenant's moving policy developed before, uh, development is approved, there's protection for them, not only to meet what exists, but, but to create them a lot more stringent because, because we recognize the difficulties they would face. In fact, we're probably the, the best allies with them to advocate on their behalf. Uh, week in, week out, uh, this council has been talking to this federal government, the provincial government, working through UBCM, UFCM, to make sure the housing is put on, on the radar for this, for the other two orders for government. And, and this was, uh, a disappointment in a way to see that the, uh, the delegation and the report that was produced was very much accusing the local government of not doing anything. And this report by the staff sets the record straight to see what has been happening, what's been done over the last, uh, four decades in terms of protecting housing, creating housing, um, options, affordability as much as we can. As a local government, you have very little control in terms of the affordability other than to, to support, uh, the development that can possibly take place. Their report, "A Community Under Attack," was very unfair to the developers. It, it just seems to, um, pick on them thinking they are here to, just only for one reason. And that's no different than any other business, your, your worship. All businesses exist to make a living, make, make, uh, make a return on their investment and, and developers have been always like that for the last since this world became, uh, as, as starting doing businesses, you got to have return. And that's what the developers do. And, and the report has been targeting local governments and developers as some kind of villains in, in what the housing situation is. Um, I don't think this report will satisfy them, but, but it tells you very clearly that the issues that have been raised, that how the staff has responded to them in a very supportive form evidence of what we have done and that report is, is there for them to, to see. This does not mean that somehow, that I think this city, this, this government, this council or the, or the staff think the, the issue of affordability is over. No, we'll never do that. We'll continue to work with them as long as there are, uh, reasons for us to support people who are worried about where they're going to stay, where they're going to live, how they're going to raise their family on, on the incomes that they have. Uh, previous delegation talked about poverty reduction. It is all about affordability. It, the, the homes, uh, are out of reach for, for not only just the, the low rung of the economic scale, but for even people who are professionals, those who are making reasonable wages, they can't afford to pay now their accommodation, whether it's rental or homeownership. So the wages haven't kept up with the housing, prices of housing. In the meantime, a lot of things have now created a affordability issue and the government has been sitting, both orders of government have been sitting, doing nothing for the last three decades while the local governments have been really raising red flag and trying to do things. Um, we have always said, this is not something that we can do with the resources available to us, uh, with the, with minimum, with the money we have from property taxes, we do not collect for putting anything on anything other than the services we provide. Notwithstanding that, but there is a list that we saw just in earlier report, what the city has done. But we have done that just on the outside of not raising property taxes. We know ultimately they'll hurt the same people we're trying to help. If you raise property taxes, they'll end up on a rental, they'll end up on the people who are renting these places, there'll be a burden on the, on the business all the way through again. So we've been trying to keep that to minimal. So when you hear a delegation come to here and, and really blame us, the local government in Burnaby not doing to solve the problem, that is hurtful in many ways. But the staff has taken each one of the issues they raised and has responded to that. When you go through that report, it shows that what needs to be done, what has been done and what we will continue to do. So I thank the staff for that and I also want to ensure the people out there who are probably watching what the, what the council are going to do, that we'll continue to advocate for the affordability and we'll find any way that we can work with the developers and we can work with the provincial government and the federal government to make sure this community stays as diverse as always should be, where people with a low income, people with medium income and high income are able to live like they've always did. So I'm hoping this is small consolation to them and that we'll continue to, to make sure that we look after, uh, the needs of our citizens, your worship. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dallywell. Councillor Volco?
Well, just very briefly, I agree with, uh, everything, believe it or not, that councillor Dallywell said. I thought he summed up the situation quite well. I just wanted to say again in response to this report, I'd like to, uh, thank staff. Uh, in a pretty short period of time, they put together a pretty comprehensive report in answering questions, uh, that were raised by the, uh, the delegation that attended council. I wanted to say, uh, you know, there's an old saying where you're entitled to your own opinion, but you're not entitled to your own facts. And I think what this report does, and I understand the passion of the delegation when they were here, I understand the, uh, I understand the difficulties that are being faced by people in the metro town area in regards to this. Uh, I think this report, uh, will go a long way to answer some of the questions that were brought forward by the delegation. Uh, I think in, in some cases, they'll have a better understanding of when they make, uh, when they're speaking with the provincial and federal representatives in regards to the housing file. I think they're going to be a little better armed with some of the information that they've got coming out of, out of this report. I just wanted to, um, I wanted to address, uh, one issue and that's, and it was also mentioned in the first report that we dealt with on the housing profile. And, um, that's on page 52 and that's under the, uh, delegation's request was rehouse all those displaced by demevictions is their term. And, uh, the submission of a tenant assistance plan, which the city came up with last year, which is, uh, which is far, far in excess of what the provincial government requires under, uh, under their programs. But I think with the announcement that was made today with the province saying that, as councillor Johnson said, I heard the date March 31st, uh, could have been March 15th. But anyways, it's March of next year, that apparently according to the provincial government, there's going to be 2,900 units come online. Now, where they're going to come online in the province, who knows? Perhaps some of them may come online in the metro town area, I don't know. But in regards to the tenant assistance plan, I think it might be appropriate to, within light of what's been occurring in the last week or two on, in regards to housing, that perhaps, uh, as, as we've clearly seen, we do have the ability, at least when it comes to, uh, tenant assistance plans, we can do through rezonings and through, uh, through applications, put in requirements of developers on, uh, on sites where there are going to be, uh, tenants and long-term tenants that are going to be, uh, uh, required to move, that perhaps we can take a serious look at, at our policy and perhaps enhance it in light of what's going on here. I'll have some questions. I'm not requesting anything at the moment, but I think it would be appropriate for, uh, staff to perhaps take a look at that, send a memo around to us and perhaps we can do a workshop in regards to what other areas we can perhaps assist when it comes to tenants that are being displaced out of their homes because of what's occurring in the housing market. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. And it's, uh, certainly I think it's been acknowledged that we have the best policy. Unfortunately, uh, the provincial government has much lower standards for tenant assistance on any, uh, forced eviction or demolition. Um, so by our rezonings, we're able to up the ability to do more for tenants. If we didn't rezone, they would be under the provincial legislation and under much lower standards. And so the rezoning does eventually offer some assistance. I just want to say in, in closing on this, um, you know, the, I don't often talk about my background or, or your background, councillor Volco, um, but in, in my case, I grew up with a single mom and, uh, I met my father twice, never paid a nickel of support. Uh, we never owned a piece of property. I went to six different elementary schools. We moved regularly throughout all of my, my life. And so for anyone to suggest I'm insensitive to these issues or lacking in compassion is so far from the truth to be absurd. You have to live it to understand it and I've lived it and I do understand it. The reality is... The reality is that I am not in provincial or federal government, and I do not have the levers and the taxation authorities that those levels of government have. And as much as I want to solve every problem for everyone in my community, I can't, and we can't, and our staff can't. We need for those governments who receive the taxation to put those taxes back into making the people's lives better and improving the quality of their life, giving them better opportunities. The first delegation we had tonight was about poverty reduction and about the need to change the way the government operates in relation to those who are most vulnerable in our society. And without those alternatives, it makes it incredibly difficult for us to struggle through these issues as local governments. But I, I can, you know, and I don't say this often because I'm considered to be a pretty tough guy, and to make it out of where I came from and go to law school, is that you had to be a pretty tough guy. But it did hurt my feelings that people make these kind of accusations about someone who comes from probably the toughest kind of roots you can have in, in British Columbia, the toughest kind of roots you have in East Vancouver, the same kind of roots that Councillor Valco comes from, that you're lacking in compassion or sensitivity for people who have vulnerabilities or are in desperate circumstances. I, I simply know the limitations of the things that I'm able to do and the things we're able to do, and I tell the truth. I don't pretend any differently, and I call a spade a spade. I, I tell where the powers lie to be able to make a difference. And I want to really thank the delegation who stayed tonight. I want to thank you for doing the work that you're doing. I was sincere about that because without the poverty reduction efforts, people will never be able to afford the housing that's being provided. And even though on a particular lot, we may build four or five times as many units as were there before, and closer to transit to allow people to access transportation, if people can't afford to rent them, if they don't have the means to be able to rent them, then it makes it an impossible struggle. And it doesn't mean the people moving into those units are bad people. They're all working people too, who are struggling to make a life for themselves. So, you know, I, I do ask for more understanding in the community for the fact that, well, local government is limited, is that we certainly are trying our very best to support those who are most vulnerable in our society. But we do, we do continue to require that the federal and provincial governments take a different attitude. And I, I do encourage people, as you move into elections, vote for people who will make a difference in regard to these issues. Vote for people who are committed to changing the poverty that we see as endemic in our communities. We are a step away from the things that are happening in the USA, where suddenly demagogues become attractive because people are so frustrated. You know, we need to make change here now, and we need to make change in the very near future. And it isn't enough for governments pre-election to recognize this issue. They have to be committed to a long-term action to be able to ensure that we start to end the kind of impossible poverty that is going on in our communities. All right, with that, questions called, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item 6.3. And this is the additional property transfer tax on foreign entities in the metro Vancouver region. One of the things, counsel, that I found really interesting about this report, and I commend to the media, is some of the numbers on how much is being drawn out of the housing market by the provincial government annually. When you talk about how unaffordable housing is becoming, look at the $1.5 billion that the provincial government took out last year on the property transfer tax. Never mind the increase, the 15% increase, which they are planning to give 75 million of that back to housing initiatives. I don't know if that's included in the 500 million or not, I'll bet it is, but the, the property tax. Now, you talk about rising housing prices, it must have an effect on housing prices when in one year you're adding $1.5 billion to the cost of housing. And then you're telling municipalities to add development cost charges on to pay for transit, to pay for housing, because you're looking at all kinds of ways in which housing prices skyrocket, but they're skyrocketing not because of what municipal government does. They take more money for property transfer tax, and we take with all of the charges we put on for them to provide the infrastructure in our communities. And what do you get for the property transfer tax? Well, that'd be nothing. Doesn't change anything. So, I mean, gosh, there, there has to be, has to be a look at this, and I don't actually believe that this property transfer tax is going to do anything. I hope it does, but I think there are dozens of lawyers and accountants right now figuring out ways around it. And, and so far, I've seen that it's pretty easy to get yourself a student or a homemaker who will be the one purchasing the house for you, even though you may be a foreign national. So I'm, I'm not confident that this is going to provide the source of funds that they claim it will, or that it's going to have any more than a temporary chilling effect on housing prices. Councillor Valco.
Thanks, your worship. I, I'm not going to beat this issue to death, but I, again, I wanted to say that I had the privilege of attending the UDI on Friday, and this is the topic that was on the agenda only that day. Five economists, a developer, a lawyer, whose practice is, is mainly in advising foreign investors from wherever on how to invest and what is the best tax treatment that they'll be able to receive if they follow certain advice. As you say, there are lawyers and accountants right now meeting in all kinds of locations, figuring out exactly how to beat this tax, and make no mistake, they'll be beaten. I want to, and for this, I thank the, and I have to give them credit. I mean, I can be as critical of the mainstream media as anyone else. I think the mainstream media has let, has let the public down in many, many regards in regards to this issue over the last few years, particularly the local major mainstream media, have been completely negligent in reporting any of it. But there has been one outlet, and oddly enough, it's based out of Toronto. So it's always good to have eyes from outside looking in to see what's going on. And the Globe and Mail has just done outstanding work. And today, there was another piece in regards, which I think is very apropos of our report. In our report, again, I'd like to thank staff on this one. As you said, Mr. Mayor, you were talking about taking a billion and a half out of the market. Jock Finlayson from the B.C. Business Council has already warned, the other day, was quoted in the press, is saying that he's very concerned about what's going on in the housing market. When you have a province whose, whose finance and whose budget is reliant on 35 to 40% of the economy now turns on real estate, that's not a healthy thing. Because everything that goes up is going to come down, and when this comes down, it will be an epic come down. So even Jock Finlayson, who certainly is not of my political stripe, recognizes what's going on and is starting to speak out. There are many, many people, even within the development community, who are speaking out. But in today's announcement, the province is starting to relent on this issue of, as our report talks about, the collection of data, or data, as some people like to call it. Oh, there's no data, there was no data. Well, there's plenty of data and data around. One of the problems is, and I'm just going to quote very briefly out of this article in today's Globe and Mail in regards to this, and Richard Curland, who has been on the press, and he's a very prominent immigration lawyer in this town, and he's always trotted out by the media when it comes to issues in regards to foreign investment and that, and he talks about what should be the requirement of foreign investors coming in and what boxes they should check off on what various forms. You know, this leads completely to incompetence and the negligence of major regulatory bodies in this country that we all thought were looking after our interests as Canadians, and basically, they've been on a coffee break for 20 years. CRA, FINTRAC, FICOM here in the province, our national police force, the RCMP, whenever you see them asked by the press as to what their response is to what's been going on, we don't have the resources. We just don't have the expertise. But they've got the expertise to hound taxpayers for $1,000 that they may owe, low-hanging fruit, they go after them with a vengeance. We have our civil forfeiture office in this province that has no problem going after some mom and pop grow up and hounding them into submission. But we have documented major tax evasion and fraud and money laundering going on in our real estate market, and not one of these regulatory agencies. And unless I need to remind anyone, they're not municipal agencies, they're federal and provincial. I've chosen over the last 20 years, as I say, to turn a blind eye to what's been going on. And Mr. Curland in this article makes a very interesting, very interesting point. He says the provincial government could compel each home buyer and seller to disclose their tax status to the land title and survey authority of B.C. anytime the ownership of a residential property changes hands. And then that office could then pass these details to the CRA, which would allow the federal body to cross-reference individual tax records, to weed out those avoiding paying the proper fees on investment residences. The province, for the last number of years, has completely ignored all of this. They knew full well that they had the authority to do this, but they chose not to. And this is what Mr. Curland said. He says, B.C., this is the lowest hanging fruit possible, he said. DC refuses to collect the information without explanation, they're not publicly saying why. This is our current provincial government, who he's referring to. And I'll close with this. He said he's been told privately by liberal MLAs that such a move would contradict their political philosophy that government should not have the capacity to know who owns what. And so that's where we are in this problem, that's where we are in this region. That's why I listened to an interview a couple of days ago of a doctor. Councillor Dallywell talks about professionals not being able to live here. That's been common knowledge for a long time, but this doctor was being interviewed, he lives in Chilliwack. He's a resident at Chilliwack General Hospital. And you know, between him and his wife, as he conceded, we do pretty well. But he says, I can't afford to purchase in Chilliwack. What does that tell you? What does that tell you about this farce that's going on right now with these announcements from the premier and from the minister? The minister of, you look at his tax, you, you look at his press release, and it's the Ministry for Housing and LNG. What kind of a mishmash of a ministry is that, please? So, your worship, I thank staff for this report. Hopefully, this is another report that isn't just put on the shelf by some folks. I highly recommend this, as you were saying earlier on of the other two reports, that at least members of the media have an opportunity to read it and take a look at it, perhaps inform themselves a little more as to not just what's going on in Burnaby. I think these reports speak to what's going on in the region. And I would, I'm not going to ask for emotion or anything, your worship, but I'm hoping that the mayor's office will have an opportunity to send out copies of these to, you know, some of the more, more pertinent media outlets within this region and within this province, so they can maybe perhaps, and you don't have to send it to the Globe and Mail, Globe and Mail, they're on top of this, but the local folks in this province, I think it might be helpful for them. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you. And I'll just close by saying, the property transfer tax is a charge that doesn't involve the government doing anything. The provincial government does nothing but add a charge on to every piece of property that's being sold. Imagine out of that $1.5 billion they're getting a year, if they had returned only a portion of that, a third or a half, to providing social housing in the province, this problem wouldn't exist. It wouldn't exist. And that's money they simply could have redirected from the sale of homes into ensuring that other people had affordable places to live. It wouldn't have affected any of the other elements in their budget, it wouldn't have affected their corporate income taxes, it wouldn't have affected any of those areas. It would have simply been a way to redistribute the wealth that's being made out of homes and ensuring other people got a chance to live affordably. But yet, that wasn't the choices that have been made over the course of many years. Suddenly, there's an epiphany now that they've got a 15% foreign buyers tax and 75 million is going into housing initiatives. But I can tell you that it could have certainly done a lot of good if there was money going out of that fund into housing initiatives for a decade. Councillor Johnson.
Just to follow on that, the minister himself has been reporting for the last five or six quarters that the property transfer taxes are exceeding budget, and for the last 18 months of real estate prices, I mean, it's kind of like they've pulled ice wool over their eyes, they don't want, they didn't want to, they didn't want to admit that they've been overtaxing. I mean, there's nothing else, drop the rate. If they don't want to put it into social housing, drop the rate from 7% down to, you know, two or three, because they would still make enough that they would achieve their objectives.
And if you're getting a windfall, don't become dependent on it.
Exactly.
Use it to be able to build housing so that you are going to be able to avoid the problems that will happen in the future when you can't afford it. Anyway, all right, you ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item 6.4. This is 4327 Dundas Street in Burnaby, and this is to request council resolution to file a notice in the land title office pursuant to section 57 of the community charter with respect to a property in contravention of the city bylaws. Questions called, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Seconder, please. This is to seek council approval for a Remembrance Day parade on November the 11th, 2016. Oh, I'm sorry, I missed one. Back, it's the Burnaby Fire Department 2015 annual report. Can I have a motion on that, please? All those in favor, opposed, carried. Now the Remembrance Day parade. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Item 7. This is to obtain council approval for a contract extension and increase for the supply and maintenance of digital multifunction copiers. Questions called, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. Item 8. This is a commercial podium, underground parking, and public realm components of the Low Heath Town Centre Phase 1 site, Low Heath Town Centre Plan, and this is authorization to forward to a public hearing on October the 25th. Questions called, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Item 9. Similarly, this is a high-rise apartment tower in the Low Heath Town Centre Phase 1 site, and this is authorization to forward this application to a public hearing on October the 25th. Questions called, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Item 10. This is installation of rooftop antenna facility, and this is to forward to a public hearing on October 25th. Questions called, all those in favor, opposed, carried. Item 11. This is a mid-rise residential building with townhouse podium, and this is to seek authorization to forward to a public hearing on October 25th. Questions called, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. And this is the retirement notices in the next report. Been moved and seconded, and here are our retirements. Is Mr. Alan McLaughlin, he is retired from employment with the city after 34 years of service. He left the position of Equipment Operator 4. Mr. Steve Cotterell, he retired from employment after 21 years of service and has held the position of Assistant Foreman Concrete. Mr. Daniel Cooper has retired from employment after 18 years of service. He held the position of Park Patroler Custodial. Mr. Douglas McDonald, he left the position of Burnaby Chief of the Fire Department after 34 years of service. Ms. Donna Iacobellus, is it, she retired from employment after 27 years, and she held the position of Planning Technician 1. Mr. Larry Ford, he retired after 23 years of service, and he held the position of Cross Connection Control Inspector. Mr. Terrence Marshall, he retired from employment after 29 years of Mr. Terrence Marshall, he retired from employment after 29 years of service, and he held the position of Truck Driver 3. Joanne Stinson retired from employment with the city after 11 years of service. She commenced employment in the Human Resources Department and finished with the Manager of Training and Organizational Employment. Mr. Bruce Rose, the City Solicitor, retired, and he retired after 24 years of service, and as I've said, he held the position of City Solicitor. Mr. William Beenum, he retired from employment after 39 years of service. He held the position of Sign Maker. Mr. Greg Mervin, he retired after 38 years of service, and he held the position of Chief Fire Prevention Officer. Mr. Stuart Imra, he retired after 36 years of service, and he held the position of Superintendent of Shops and Equipment. Ms. Lynn Axford retired from the city after 23 years of service. She held the position of Administrative Officer in the Clerks Department. And we've got Mr. Nelson Porter, retired from employment with the city after 14 years of service. He held the position of Superintendent of Pumps and Controls. Mr. David Mann retired from the city after 32 years of service, retired as Trades Foreman 2 in the garage. Mr. Chuck Mackindoe, he retired after 31 years of service. He held the position of Assistant Pump Services Maintenance Worker. Mr. Liam McGaffey, he retired after 30 years of service and held the position of Foreman in Sanitation. Mr. Scott Monroe retired after 30 years of service and held the position of Fire Captain in our Fire Department. Mrs. Vanita Omera, she retired after 29 years of service, and she held the position of Clerk Typist 3 in Engineering. Mr. Ron Barker, he retired after 28 years of service and held the position of Deputy Fire Chief. Ms. Nazlyn Herji retired after 29 years of service. She held the position of Administrative Assistant OIC. Mr. Ben English retired after 29 years of service, held the position of Fire Captain. Mr. Jeffrey Wilson retired after 25 years of service and held the position of Captain in Fire Prevention. And Mr. James Butts retired after 28 years of service and held the position of Fire Captain. Our congratulations to all who have retired, and our thanks for the many years of service. You can see that there's a lot of years of service that are there with our retirees. Ready for the question? All those in favor, opposed, and carried. A motion to rise and report. All those in favor, opposed, carried. A motion to adopt the report of the committee. All those in favor, opposed, carried. Bylaws, councillor Johnson, please.
For first, second, and third reading, I would move that bylaw 13647. Be now introduced and read three times.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor, opposed, carried.
For consideration and third reading, I would move that Burnaby zoning bylaw 1965, amendment bylaw number 402015, 13557, be now considered and read a third time.
Moved and seconded, discussion, seeing none, all those in favor, opposed, carried.
And then finally, for reconsideration and final adoption, I would move the bylaws 13528, 13576, 13646, be now reconsidered, finally adopted, signed by the mayor and clerk, and the corporate seal will fix their ticket.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor, opposed, and carried. I am moving on to new business. I wanted to mention that we've got a really light council tonight. Thank you, everybody, for staying here because we were at Berwick Warham. Unfortunately, we've got councillor McNell home ill, councillor Jordan is home ill. I know she really would have liked to have been here for the housing reports. Councillor Calendino is away in Europe and will, I hope, be returning very soon. And councillor Wang, his mother had an accident apparently on the transit system and has been hospitalized, so he was unable to be here with us. So I appreciate everybody else making sure they were here to let this council meeting go ahead. And also, I wanted to mention is that if you could call us and give us any feedback at home about how the reception was tonight, and whether or not we obtained, it was better for you at home and listening to this, anybody at the back who was able to listen tonight, if it's been a little better as a result of the improvements we've made in the system, we'd like to hear from you. So it's a work in progress still, but I'm hoping that we're going to see a lot better opportunities for people to get what's going on at the meeting. And I know it, it's certainly from my point of view, it's been easier. All right, and with that, a motion to adjourn. All those in favor, opposed, and carried. Thank you, council, thank you, staff, and thank you to everyone who was with us tonight.